All right, we will call the Planning and Zoning Board meeting to order on Tuesday, July 14th, 2020, at 6:00 PM. So our first order of business is to do a roll call. So if you just go along the line, starting with Jamie Daniels, and say, Jamie Daniels?
Jamie Daniels.
Here.
Here.
Fields Scarborough, here.
Nicole Northrup, here.
Hal Goodman, here.
And Sherri Wickstrom, here. So the first thing that we need to do is we need to adopt the agenda. First of all, are there any changes to the agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda as proposed.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Hal Goodman to adopt the agenda, and a second by Jamie Daniels. And so, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, that's unanimous. Aye. Okay, all right. Okay, so unanimous, everybody said it. So we do have an adoption of the agenda. And the next order of business is the approval of minutes. Minutes have been distributed. And are there any changes by members of the board to the minutes? Anything that...
It would be the amended minutes, because the minutes were distributed, and then they were amended and redistributed.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I just want to make sure people are reading the right minutes.
Okay. All right, so we have the... Okay, so just small changes before the minutes actually came to us. So we don't have any changes to the minutes?
I'll move that we approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second that.
All right, Hal Goodman moved to approve the minutes. Nicole Northrup seconded the minutes. And we'll take a vote, and please say your name. So start.
Here.
Jamie Daniels, aye.
Fields Scarborough, aye.
Nicole Northrup, aye.
Hal Goodman, aye.
And Sherri Wickstrom, aye. So the minutes that we have before us have been approved. The next item of business is public comment. I know that we have some people who have called in. So I would just like to remind the members of the public are invited to address the Planning Board. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions or take action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual member. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person and five per group. So if you wish to speak, please press star nine, and you will be called on by the last four digits of your phone number. Do we have anyone who has called into our Planning Board meeting who would like to speak during the public comment period? No one? Okay, one last time, anybody out there who would like to make a public comment? We are here to hear you. Okay, seeing no one pushing star nine, we will then go to the next thing on the agenda, which is our new business. So first on our new business agenda is new business A, Appointment and Reappointment to the Park Committee. So as a member of Park, which is the Preservation Architectural Review Committee, we have two things that have happened that I would like to discuss with this group. The first one is that member Amy Bennett has missed two consecutive meetings on Park. One of them was a year-standing appointment that she had, and the other was because Park had to reschedule a special meeting outside the regularly scheduled meetings that Park usually has, because it was requested by a resident who wanted to begin a remodel project. And Park needed to weigh in before our planner Melissa Dickerson could approve the building permit. So that was the situation that happened this time. So I have spoken to Amy, and she would really like to continue her contribution on the Board, and feels that she's got the flexibility in her schedule to be able to make the regularly scheduled meetings. Personally, I think the missing of the two meetings was really circumstantial. I think that it's probably more a situation of the two consecutive meeting rule. And anyway, so I do think that Amy provides this great insight on architecture and design to the group from her professional view. She is a designer by profession, she owns a company, she's very familiar with homes in Manio, both historic and new. She's familiar with the Manio way of building, and I believe Amy is a valuable asset to Park. So I would recommend, working with this group, that we reappoint Amy Bennett. This is open for discussion, and anybody who would like to comment or make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion to reappoint Amy Bennett.
I'll second it.
She is a good choice.
Great, so Jamie Daniels made the motion that we reappoint Amy Bennett, and Hal Goodman seconded the motion. So if we would go through, and please say your name.
Jamie Daniels, aye.
Fields Scarborough, aye.
Nicole Northrup, aye.
Hal Goodman, aye.
And Sherri Wickstrom, aye, that is unanimous. Amy, you are back on board, thank you so much for your service, I really appreciate your knowledge. The second item that is Park-related is that Catherine Bachan, a longtime member and Chair of Park, has shared with me that she will be resigning from the Park Committee. So this announcement, while understandable, will impact the membership of Park. Catherine was the Chair of Park and the ex-officio member of the Manio Preservation Trust, where she is also the Chair. So Park will need to receive a designee, and we will make that appointment from the Manio Preservation Trust to fill her spot according to the ordinance. So they will put a name forward to us. This will happen at the next meeting. So we will still need to figure out who the Chair will be, but we can have that discussion at Park. So I would really like, since Catherine is leaving, I would really like to acknowledge the service to the town of Manio by Catherine. She has made important contributions as an architect and a longtime member of Park. Catherine was appointed to Park in 2008, and she became Chair of the Committee in 2011. She was important to the group because she, as I mentioned, was also the Chair of the Manio Preservation Trust. So Catherine's fingerprints are on many house designs in Manio over the past 12 years. She has reviewed and made recommendations on a majority of new construction in Marshes Light, and has weighed in on many other new homes and additions around Manio, including my own home, for which I am very grateful. That Park gave me great advice on what to do to fit into Manio. Catherine has been dedicated to our way of building, called the Manio Way, and has helped the town achieve a beautiful uniqueness not found anywhere else. Manio is indebted to her dedication, her expertise, and architectural professionalism over the years. We are all grateful for her service. So thank you Catherine for all you have done to make Manio so special. So the next order of business under new business is recommendations to the Board of Commissioners regarding the zoning text amendment boat lifts, section 12-7. And first, I would like to call on Melissa to give us a staff report, and then we will ensue by having discussion about a number of items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I've provided to you all staff report on this matter. This might be the... Sherri?
Do you want mine?
For you all calling in, we had some technical difficulties with my microphone. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I've provided you all a staff report, which is updated a number of times regarding the boat lifts. So the Board of Commissioners voted in favor with a four to three vote to amend the town's zoning ordinance to allow boat lifts and marinas in the section that is called out as Shalabag Bay South, which is south of the North Carolina Maritime Museum. I provided, attached to my staff report, the approved text amendment, so you all have that provided to you. In addition to removing the prohibition of boat lifts and marinas located in Shalabag Bay South, the Board of Commissioners has referred back to you all a proposed text amendment prohibiting boat lifts on property owned by the town on the historic Manio waterfront as defined in section 12-7A1 of the zoning ordinance. The current ordinance text is provided as attachment two. So I think the Board of Commissioners are sending this to you all now, because as a result of some conversation, or some discussion that was had by the public hearing, where there was a concern from the public mentioned that they were worried that there would be boat lifts on the town-owned docks and town-owned properties. So the Board of Commissioners has sent it back to you all to have a discussion and perhaps work out how that prohibition could be placed on the town's properties. So that's the first issue. And then, following down in my staff report, the Board of Commissioners have also requested that the Planning and Zoning Board consider the two following things. Restrictive language such as removing boats from boat lifts during named storms, and then the other is the length of a boat allowed in a boat lift. So my recommendation for you all is that, first, I'd like to hear your discussion about these three separate items tonight. And then, the idea is that, being informed of the discussion of what your thoughts and input is, that I would then take the results of that conversation, work with the town attorney to come up with another text amendment that would address what the Board of Commissioners are asking to address. And then, at your August meeting, come back and look at that and see if we need to tweak that language at all. And then we'll just follow the process from that point on. So I think it's important, though, for you all to consider these things as three separate items, and have each item a discussion for each. And then, we'll do one text amendment for that section, if that's what you all deem appropriate. And so I'll work in the next couple of weeks to come up with that and have conversations with you all to try and get it as good as possible, and then we'll have it at your August meeting for more consideration. So.
Could you list those three items one more time?
Sure, so the first is prohibiting boat lifts on town-owned property. And so right now, the town-owned property that would be most impacted would be under the section in this ordinance that is listed as Historic Manio Waterfront, which is the headwaters of Does Creek to the Maritime Museum. And that is how it's defined in the ordinance. The second issue is considering restrictive language such as removing boats from boat lifts during named storms. And then the third was the length of a boat allowed in a boat lift.
So I think that it would be appropriate for us to take these, and really, what tonight, I think, what will happen tonight is discussion about all three of these. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Hal?
Yeah, I did a little bit of research, and if I could, throw out a couple of things for discussion on each one of those three items that Melissa delineated there. I think the no boat lifts permitted on the town docks and town property is real easy to take care of, except I think we need to add the section of town dock that extends from the Maritime Museum over to the Net Shed, because that's town property and it's not included in that. And I think we need to extend it all the way over to where it meets up with the Marshes Light property. And on the second item, which is vessels being removed from boat lifts, I think we need to look at all vessels must be removed from boat lifts at least 24 hours prior to the predicted arrival of a named storm. And also, all vessels must be removed from a boat lift at least 12 hours prior to any forecast wind event where winds are expected to exceed 40 miles per hour. Because I think in a case like that, even though it's not a named storm, it's still going to stir up the water enough that waves may knock the boat off the lift, or the wind itself. If the boat has enough windage, it's going to push it off the lift and damage adjacent boats. So got to look at both factors there, not just a named storm, but also a major wind event. And finally, looking at the size of boat lifts and the size of boats you can put in there, the lifts get pretty large and the boats can get pretty big, so I think we ought to restrict that to boats no longer than 28 feet, but you know, we can discuss that. Looking at the size of the lift required and the size of the boats in the lift, I think we should probably stop it there, because larger lifts and larger boats really are going to occupy a lot of sightline.
Thank you so much, Hal, I really appreciate the work done on that. I think, if it's okay with everybody, how about if we just break those down and have an in-depth conversation about each one of those, and how we will bring your ideas in and absolutely build on that?
Yeah, I just want to put those on the floor and use that as a place to start the discussion.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. So this first question, and I would actually like to make sure that we're talking about... So this is text language around no boat lifts and Historic Manio Waterfront. And what we had heard from the Board of Commissioners is they are identifying that area as the area from Does Creek headwaters to the North Carolina Maritime Museum. So that's actually, that language is actually in the current ordinance. But first of all, and I am in agreement with Hal, I think we need to redefine the geography of the Historic Manio Waterfront. Because when the zoning code was written, actually, the very building that is named here, the North Carolina Maritime Museum, that museum went away in February 2007, I believe. So what is identified as that building in our zoning code, it has a completely different name, it is not owned by the state of North Carolina as a maritime museum. So I think we really need to change the language of what that zoning code says. But additionally, just as Hal mentioned, there's, so much has happened since that the zoning text was put into code, and that is the Net Shed, as was mentioned by Hal, which obviously is a historic component. I mean, the building is new, but the commemoration of what happened there is certainly historic. Also, one might say that even past the Net Shed, you know, the town certainly has a vested interest in that with a public easement and the deeded park, maybe just to protect that whole boardwalk area, we should think about how far we go from Does Creek to which point, and what should it include? Should it go as far as to where the park is? And I think, oh, wow, there it is. Melissa, can you show us on that? I can't even see that.
I know, let me...
And this is just open for discussion, maybe this isn't the direction we want to go in, I just want to throw it out there.
I had in my notes, could we prohibit boat lifts up to the current marina in Marshes Light?
Oh, yeah.
Just because that is all, so many people walk along there, it's a really popular area for people who live here and people who don't live here, it's just beautiful, and it would not look the same.
Well, it's probably a good idea, because there are currently no boat slips along that boardwalk, because the water's too rough. But if you allow boat slips, somebody may say, oh, can I get a slip there? Let's put a boat lift in to protect the boat.
And just so that, because there are folks that are listening, if I could just call on you just so that your name is there and they can attach your voice to your name, I know they're not going to mistake you, Hal, for Nicole. But if I could just do that, I think it would really be helpful, because I've been on that listening end and not sure who's speaking before, too. So Nicole, you're thinking, and of course, Melissa would take this to our town attorney to see, but...
She goes, too.
Right, so your idea was that we should continue the protection of having no boat lifts up to where the current marina is? And there are already, what, 180 boat slips that are associated with that marina? That's quite a large number. But just to prevent, okay. And then, and Hal, you said that you thought that was a good idea because...
Yeah, just because that area is there right now, and it's not usable to tie a boat up because of the wave action. But if somebody came up there and said, hey, if I put a boat lift in here, I can more boat, and we would definitely want to prohibit that, because that's a real heavily-used walkway in the summer, and when anything's going on in town, because people park over at Marshes Light and then walk down that walkway.
Well, this is Sherri Wickstrom. I drove over there today just to look at it again before our meeting tonight. I walk it every morning, so it should be permanently in my brain. But I just had a couple of questions. And I saw 10 kids swimming right there, I don't know what they're supposed to do, but I thought, wow, that would really restrict youth activity if there were boat lifts or a marina there. Does anyone else, Fields or Jamie?
Yeah, this is Jamie Daniels, I have a couple of questions, both from Melissa, maybe we can get back to us. I want to go look at the map, I see the numbered slips. That's where we're all assuming that those are either for sale, or they come with a condo unit, and the people that buy those own that slip. And that's where they're going to want to put a boat lift, where they own that slip. But if you look up to the boardwalk, can people, I mean, I know you could pull a boat up there in theory, but where is the property line there? Where is that? I know the boardwalk itself is a, what do you call it, not town property, but it's a public...
There's a public park easement.
Park easement goes there. So could you even, is that, maybe a mute point, is that even feasible that someone could put a boat lift there? Because is that for sale? Is it public trust water? I guess, public trust waters?
I know from, this is Hal Goodman, I know from permitting some marina projects, they're all on public trust water, so it would be, I think, prudent on our part to restrict it upfront, instead of having to fight the battle if somebody comes in there and applies for a permit to do that.
And I think our point would be like where the slips are, and that was the intent anyway, that's what they were asking for, is boat lifts in the slips.
In the slips, but yeah, if they run out of slips, there's no, you know, somebody may push to expand the marina over in that direction.
Or that all of that is commercial space that hopefully be developed soon, so who knows what could go in there?
Exactly.
Yeah, so this is Sherri Wickstrom, I'm piggybacking on Jamie Daniels' comments. I wonder, I mean, if they got a conditional use permit, maybe they could do a marina, could they?
Well, they have a marina. I think that in the original Marshes Light plans, there were plans to have additional, like, finger piers with docks closer to the hotel. And so that would have been a possibility, or to the hotel site, I should say. That would have been a possibility out here, but I think in negotiations with the town, all of their boat slips moved further south, closer to the actual basin and what has historically been the marina in that location. been the marina in that location.
Okay. And may I, it's Nicole Northrup.
And I like both of the points that you made, because I think that Jamie and Hal made, because I think we get into trouble, just like I know people were not asking to put lifts downtown. You get into trouble when your language is not specific and there is an allowance there. And then you have to go back and say, oh, wait, where is it? Oh, it's not in the document. So that's kind of, I was well aware that people are not asking to put lifts downtown, but technically, it is allowed. There is no prohibition on it. And we just, I kind of feel strongly that we don't want to have language that's too gray, so you could get into issues with something like that.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, Melissa Dickerson?
So I agree, there's an issue with the current ordinance, this is Melissa Dickerson. There's an issue with the current ordinance also with the designation of those specific areas, in my opinion. So currently, the section that is listed in A is headwaters of Doze Creek to the Maritime Museum, which they call it out as Historic Manial Waterfront. Well, I don't think that, as part of your discussion, you all have any intention of prohibiting them in the headwaters of Doze Creek, where there are private residences with docks in Doze Creek. So I think there is, and we will be able to define this a little better, but from the Corame Bassnight Bridge to whatever point south.
Or the boat ramp beside Corame Bassnight Bridge, south to the basin.
That's Fields Scarborough. Fields, would you repeat that, please? It was such a good point.
That's just designated for two points, just one, the Bassnight Bridge, south to the basin of the Marshes Light Marina.
Yep, that's exactly what we need, to be specific.
Yeah, agreed. Are there any other components to this text that Melissa will draft for us, that we will review for the next time to answer this question for the Board of Commissioners? Is there anything else we might want to? I mean, really, we're talking about geography and a definition of what that waterfront is. And that's what's, that's what's the most important to us. And then, of course, to say, no boatlifts.
No, ma'am, I just add that.
Jamie Daniels.
Sorry, Jamie Daniels. I believe that's when the Board of Commissioners voted to allow boatlifts in Marshes Light, that that's what they intended. Of course, they may say something different, but that's what they intended, was those numbered slips to allow that. And so that's.
Okay.
We want to uphold what they've asked us to do.
All right, very well. Let me ask, Melissa, do you think you have enough information to draft something after having conferring with our town attorney?
I do. Did you all want to visit also the named storm issue?
We're going there next. We're going there next.
For point one, yes, I'm fine.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, I don't think we need a motion, since this is informational.
We're just going to take this conversation and take the consensus and use it for a handiwork.
Very well. And then the next meeting, we would move to adopt whatever text language, if we, you know, if we agree with it, whatever.
Unless it needs more work when I get it back to you.
There you go.
Yes.
So we're good. All right. The next, the next item was restrictive, yes, restrictive language such as removing boats from boatlifts during named storms. And Hal had weighed in on that?
Yeah, the reason I chose 24 hours is you're going to have some people that might be non-resident property owners, and they'll have a boat in a lift. And if they don't get it out of there in time, they're going to say, oh, my gosh, there's no place to put the boat, because all the land down in Wanchies, where the boats get stored when they're pulled out for a storm, gets, most of it is reserved ahead of time and gets filled up quickly. So if they don't get it out of there in enough time, they're going to be crying that they don't have a place to put the boat, and they're going to want to try and leave it in the lift and tie it down.
That was Hal Goodman. And I'm wondering if we should actually ask the question, we're the planning board, our question is always why or what or how does it affect? Is this restriction reasonable? I mean, this is something for us to think about.
Well, I can speak to that from the standpoint of in past storms recently, there have been several boats on private docks that were on boatlifts that got, Hurricane Michael, for example, which came up and surprised everybody. One of the boats out on Ballast Point got knocked off the lift. The lift punched a hole in the hull of the boat and it sank right there in the slip. Fortunately, there was, you know, it was a private dock, so there weren't other boats around it. But if you're in a marina and that happens and it comes off the lift, there's a good chance it's going to get, you know, knocked in by the wave action, knocked into another boat or several boats and damaged those also. So.
May I, oh, sorry.
Yes.
May I follow up on your comment? This is Nicole Northrup. I'm going to play devil's advocate. Say we pass this, who's going to enforce it?
Well, I think, this is Hal Goodman again, probably have to alert all the marina managers to whatever it is that we finally pass. But a lot of marinas have a restriction. I don't know about Marshes Light, that if there's a named storm, you have to remove your boat from the marina anyhow, because they don't want damage to the dock when the boats start getting blown around and banging into each other and getting washed up on the land in a storm surge. So a lot of marinas do have the requirement that the boats be removed from the marina itself. So I think we just also want to stipulate that they be removed from the boatlift. And whoever runs the marina is usually good about calling all the boat owners that haven't removed their boats and saying, hey, you got to get down here and get your boat out here before the storm gets here.
That is a good point. I forgot that they do make them, if they're floating, come out.
This is Jamie Daniels.
Good point, Hal.
So, so it's, this is Sherri Wickstrom. So this body feels that this is a good restriction on the part of the town to pursue and add to the zoning language.
I would say yes.
How about you, Fields?
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, very well. And so in terms of this, Melissa, did you capture? Okay, all right. I think that's really what we needed, was just to have a discussion about it. We seem to all be on board.
Yeah, Jamie Daniels again. I appreciate Hal, because I would assume, not knowing any better, that a boat on a lift would be safe in a storm, but with your past experience, you know it is not, so.
Thank you. This is Hal Goodman. They basically just sit on the beams that comprise the boatlift and they're not tied down in any way. So storm surge or wind can take it right off the lift.
Thank you for your experience. So are we in a place where we feel that we can ask Melissa to go ahead and write something to capture this discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I think it's Fields Scarborough.
Oh, yes, Fields.
Not only a named storm, but any tropical depression or.
Yeah, that's why I stipulate any wind event over 40 miles an hour, in addition to a named storm.
Any kind of depression that's out there that's headed our way.
Wind event over 40 miles an hour or a named storm. I'm just saying this for Melissa. Okay. That looks like that's, that's good, a go. All right, last one. And that is the length of the boat allowed in a boatlift. So first of all, first question is, being the planning board, is this, is this a question, I mean, that we should include text for our zoning code on?
This is Hal Goodman. I think we need to do it, because when boatlifts first came out, they were for smaller boats. They're available now to pick up boats, I think, up to about 25,000 or 30,000 pounds, which is a pretty large boat. I've seen, you know, if you look at places in Florida, they'll have 35-foot boats in lifts. And a 35-foot boat is pretty large, sight obstruction.
Yeah.
So that's why I was looking at picking a number like 28 feet, which is already starting to get big, but, you know, from 28 on down, those are the boats that people like to put in lifts.
I would say, I don't know if it's right, but I think it's a good starting point. And I think it's something to put in there and start work with.
Okay, that's good. So this is Sherri Wickstrom. A thought I had is maybe we could have Melissa query some of the other towns that have boatlifts and see what folks do and bring that information to us the next time. And then we could review that together and see what is reasonable with a comparative analysis. Would everybody be in favor of directing Melissa to do this?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Absolutely.
Okay. She's a thumbs up. Melissa Dickerson, for all those listening, is a thumbs up.
With all the other things she doesn't have to do, she's a sad town.
Right. Yeah. All right. Well, that was what was expected of us. Let's see, let me get back to our agenda. And the next item is board member comments. I think I'll just go down the row. I started with Nicole. Let's go with you, Nicole. Do you have any comments you would like to make?
This was a great working meeting. Thank you, everybody. It was a really great meeting.
Great. Hal?
The only comment I had, and I had spoken to Melissa about this, there's a sailboat that appears to be abandoned right by the state boat ramp at the Washington Bottom Bridge. And I don't know if it's in the town jurisdiction or not. I think it's in unincorporated Dare County.
That's correct.
So our allowance to be able to have it removed doesn't apply.
Right.
I have seen that one, too. This is Sherri Wickstrom. I have seen that one, too. There's also one floating on its side in Marshes Light. I don't know who belongs to that.
It's my understanding that Saga was working to gain ownership of that vessel in order to dispose of it. So they were working with the boat owner to take over ownership so they could.
Yeah, it's getting to be a problem, because there are two of them that were pulled in like before Hurricane Dorian last fall, that are just south of Wanchies, up in the marsh. One of them's a large express fishing boat and the other's a sailboat, and they've been there ever since then, and they're both hard to ground now.
The express boat is like sitting on the bottom.
Yeah, that's it. It's hard to ground.
I believe. It's Fields Scarborough. I believe the governor just passed a law with the marine fisheries that they're going to be able, they're going to fund to remove boats like that. I think it just came into effect, I believe, this month.
That's Fields Scarborough.
I know it's something you could get up with the marine fisheries, perhaps Eddie Mann's on it. He would know more about that new law than they would know. They will move, they have funding to dispose of.
Well, the issue is usually, yeah, funding is part of the issue. The other one is they got to go through a condemnation procedure to get the ownership.
I think it made that easier now.
Oh, okay.
It'd be like a 30-day would be the maximum wait.
Yeah, because that's what took a long time, was gaining ownership of the vessels so they could move it.
That makes sense.
Madam Chair, so we went through this a few years ago, when there were two boats out in the bay that had more than been abandoned. And the town, Melissa Dickerson, took ownership of them. And that's similar to what Saga is doing. But the process with wildlife resources is long. I mean, the boat has to be there for 30 days, and 30 days during a storm season could be pretty long and pose a risk. So, but it is a long process. I mean, I think beginning then, it took me 72 days.
Fields, what did you say? I'm sorry, I missed that.
I said, I believe they've shortened part of that and leave the whole.
That's great. I've made a note, I'll look into it.
Great. Thank you so much. And thank you for that piece of information, very important. Jamie Daniels, do you have any comments, other than the ones you've made already?
No, ma'am, I'm satisfied.
Very well.
Thank you all.
And Fields, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
Melissa, just a thumbs up, all good.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Melissa. And Nicole? I started with you. Yes, thank you, thank you. All right. Well, this is everybody's favorite time of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Fields Scarborough.
I'll second it.
Moves to adjourn. Hal Goodman seconds that. All those in favor, I think we've got unanimous support of this motion. This meeting is adjourned.
Really didn't expect any.